The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in an open session. The time is 6:01 PM. The time now is 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the Atascaceta High School Marines, JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
I'm very happy to. Welcome, everybody. It's great to have you all here. We're very excited to see our rodeo art winners and much more. But tonight, we're going to start out with something that's really close to my heart. As you all know, COVID-19 and the pandemic threw us into virtual learning when we'd never been there before as a district. And as the pandemic started to change and we were able to open our campuses back to students, the strong majority of our students and their families wanted to come back to campus for some very good reasons. But for a few students and a few staff members, the virtual environment was better for them. And so, UMBLE ISD, in our commitment to personalizing education for each and every child and their needs, decided to carry forward with what is somewhat a cumbersome and difficult thing to do, providing virtual education for about 300 students in the district. And so, tonight, we are going to share an inspiring moment that looks into the day of a virtual teacher and some of her students.
We all know what traditional classroom learning is like, but what is virtual learning like?
UMBLE ISD really is a district that values choice and autonomy and individualized experiences for all students and families. Even though COVID was the start of virtual learning out of necessity, it opened up some doors for our learners that best suited their families and that learning style and gave us an opportunity to reach kids that had not previously been reached in a new way.
Virtual learning can be a lifeline to some students. I love the quote, "Every student can learn, just not on the same day or in the same way."
Well, there's different people who like being at school face-to-face, like seeing their friends, like being there, playing on the playground with their friends. And there's some people who are shy, some scared, nervous, so they like being online and it helps them more focus. And I'm one of those people. I'm not those other people who like being face-to-face and being on the playground stuff, because when I, like, I just get sick very easily, especially out in the cold. So, it would not work for me. So, virtual's very good for me.
Hi, my name's Mallory Sanchez, and I'm the 4th and 5th grade virtual RILA teacher for UMBLE ISD. Today, you'll get a sneak peek to see what our virtual academy is all about.
This is a scheduled day. They have, you know, they're scheduled to the morning, so they have breaks, they have a lunch, and they have to log in. They have to make sure they're there on time. Okay, so this is where I do, like, community time with my students in the morning. They get to share about their evening or weekend before, and then we get into our writer's workshop.
Aww. Is that from your mom?
Patterns of power. Open up your book. This is like I'm walking around. You got your book open, we're ready to go, okay?
His cause of death remains a mystery even today.
Virtual learning takes a teacher that is willing to look at the materials that she needs or he needs in order to make impact in a classroom and figure out how to make that apply in a virtual setting.
We kind of made these little hand signals, since we're virtual, to kind of touch base with each other. And we do thumbs up, thumbs down, we do raise the roof, we do different kinds of hand signals to celebrate what we're learning in class. Whenever a student has their hand up and does this, I know that they've made some kind of connection. And then, as soon as one hand goes up, you usually see a lot more, because then they realize that they do have a connection, either text-to-text, text-to-world, or a text-to-self connection. So, that helps me as a teacher know if they're understanding the material and following along.
Within our virtual setting, we have whole group and small group sessions, just like you would in a face-to-face classroom. We also offer tutoring sessions. Another thing that we provide is also dyslexia and intervention services, as well as special education services for our virtual students.
First breath, breathe in and out.
So, now that we've wrapped up our reading workshop, we move into small groups, and I get to meet with a smaller amount of students for about 20 minutes, and then we come back for a writer's workshop in a little bit.
Beneath her wing.
Beneath her wing is the prepositional phrase. Everybody good? Okay, here we go. Okay, let's look at what you're going to work on today during some of your breaks.
They have a health desk at 3:00. If they have any problems, they get to have that one-on-one with the teacher.
And we'll go there if you don't understand something, and they'll re-explain it to us, and they'll just explain it where we understand, and she'll show it on paper.
And to me, that's very important. They get to really learn a lot more that way. They do see the same kids every day. It is a classroom, but virtually. So, I love that they actually do these little gatherings, so they can get to, you know, really get to know them and learn together.
So, now, 4th grade is going to hop on over for math and science, and 5th grade is going to come onto my Zoom for reading and writing. Hello? Good morning. How's it going?
As a coordinator of virtual learning in the district too, I often get surprised looks even from other coordinators, where they say, "Wow, you're still doing virtual learning?" And yeah, yeah, we are. And I can show you some families and students that are very grateful to be in a district where it's still offered.
My daughter Ariana is in 6th grade, and she has a medical condition that requires her to be on immunosuppression medications. And so, when virtual started due to COVID, we did not feel comfortable sending her back to school initially because of the immunosuppression medications. And we saw how fantastic she was doing academically, mentally. We saw a change in her personality, and she was happy. She enjoyed doing school now. And regardless of whether UMBLE ISD will do virtual in the future, she will remain a virtual student by some means. And that's just from how excellent she has been doing academically. And she's actually challenging herself to do beyond what's expected of her in her age group.
Virtual Academy is available for application for kindergarten to 12th grade students. It is for those learners that can be self-motivated, that have family support, that are going to be able to follow and stick to a schedule and do assignments and projects on their own terms, but then also still be dedicated enough to come to those Zoom lessons and know when it's time for me to. Maybe I do need to go into office hours or into some tutoring, because it's not a traditional place.
I love virtual. Virtual, it just gives me this freedom to be able to make connections that I can't make. I'm in their home every day, and they love showing off what's going on in their world. It has filled my heart with more joy. I actually truly can't imagine doing anything else.
I'm so proud of our staff and the students and the families. UMBLE ISD is really committed to partnering with each and every family for their unique circumstances. And it really worked out well, because some of our staff have really flourished in this environment. And in a time when you hear about nationwide teacher shortages, it's just great to provide an opportunity for teachers to really find their niche and find the place that they feel like they do the most good. So, it's been a really important and powerful small group, and we're very proud to offer it in UMBLE ISD. All right, next. UMBLE ISD recently hosted its annual rodeo art show. We love that. Every single year, the art is incredible. We have a short video about it that will play as Sandy Newton, Assistant Director of Fine Arts, comes to the podium to recognize some very talented students who are here tonight.
Great intro. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Fagan. I am Sandra Newton, and I am honored to be the new Visual Arts Administrator for UMBLE ISD. It's a homecoming. We appreciate your support, and we thank you for celebrating some of the students' successes in UMBLE ISD's award-winning visual arts programs. This year, UMBLE ISD rodeo art showcased the rich educational opportunities for students in UMBLE ISD visual art programs and featured a wide variety of media, both 2D and 3D. Top awards presented to students include Special Merit, Gold Medal, and Best in Show. Artwork was adjudicated by a panel of five experienced art educators who considered originality, creativity, craftsmanship, and Western content, of course. Tonight, we are honoring the 22 students who received these top honors. I would like to invite the following students to come forward to be recognized as your name is called, as our 2022-2023 UMBLE ISD rodeo art top winners, and I ask their teachers to please join them. Helena Carreras, Daisy Cow. And I want your shirt, by the way. Helena. Carson Glaze, Baby Mockingbird in Bloom. Luisa Parreira, Bouquet of Wild Flowers. Madeline Ramber, Western Wonder. Joanna Joseph, Days on the Farm. Victoria Sanchez, Sepeda, Barnyard Nap. Gabriella Guillen-Giann-Giann, Cowboy Oasis. And Lyric Lewis, Wild 'n Out. Next for our Gold Medal recipients, Kason Olem. Did I get that right? Good deal. Kason Jr., by the way, was the name of his. Delilah Noriega, Horse in the Field. I don't think she could be with us this evening. Genesis Murillo, It's a bouquet, y'all. Mary Vonovich, Daisy. Michaela Roberson, In the Distance. Iaxis, I Will Be Heard. Cameron Swallow, Head in the Clouds. Mia Bryant, Cowboy Like Me. And now for our Best in Show. Jaden O'Doffy, One Colorful Cactus. Because there's just one. Brielle Bass, Fancy Roadrunner. Eva Simmons, Roundup Reptile. Amaya Griffin, Piggy in the Garden. Anaya Smith-Boden, Henry. And Cade Gorman, Ready for the Show. While they're taking a picture, a few other tidbits of information. In addition to the top awards, 10 pieces from almost 1,000 entries were selected by the UMBLE Education Foundation Auction Committee to advance to the Gala Auction in April. So, everybody get your checkbooks ready. Students will definitely benefit from the, will benefit, directly benefit from the auction proceeds from their artwork. And 12 elementary pieces were selected and photographed for card sets that will be sold at the Spirit Store at the Administration Building. Congratulations to all of our students for a job well done, and to our visual arts educators for their dedication and commitment to student excellence. Cade. Cade. Congratulations. Thank you. And that's not all. We also have a really unique experience that we need to celebrate. March is Youth Art Month, with Texas being the leader in Youth Art Month recognitions. Each year, the Texas Art Education Association sponsors an art exhibit in the lower rotunda of the State Capitol Building in Austin, and then moves the exhibition to the Bullock Texas State History Museum, also in Austin. Districts from across the state may submit limited numbers of artwork made by pre-kindergarten through 12th grade student artists in public and private schools to be considered for maybe being selected for participation in the Youth Art Month State Capitol Exhibit in Austin. I'm excited to share that UMBLE ISD had not one, but two pieces selected to be a part of the 2023 Texas Youth Art Month Exhibition in Austin. These students were celebrated at an award ceremony in Austin on March 12, 2023, and their artwork will be on display in Austin at the Bullock Museum until the end of March. I would like, these students could not be with us this evening, but the first is Haley Anse from Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. Oh, she's here. Come on down. And Shelby Kite, Passion, from Kingwood Middle School. This is quite an honor, because there's only 100 pieces chosen from across the state, about 100. Just go up there over there. You go up there, too. All right, ready, one, two, three, four, one, two, and three. Again, congratulations, students. Well done. And to visual arts teachers, thank you for providing inspiration and guidance to the students to, for the students to excel. Thank you. Thank you.
While we're transitioning here, I just want to say, I really love rodeo art celebration, because we offer so many incredible programs in UMBLE ISD. And sometimes, we bring our musicians in, and you get to see those students perform and demonstrate their strengths and their passions. And tonight is no different. These students have incredible talents, strengths, and passions that are not tested on the STAR Test, and we get to showcase them here tonight. And I'm so proud of UMBLE ISD and all the excellence that we offer. And I'm so proud of UMBLE ISD and all the excellence that we offer for students, and no matter your interest, whether it's welding, or painting, drawing, sculpting, playing an instrument, singing, you name it, we have incredible instructors offering first-class programs in every arena. So thank you to all of our teachers and our staff who present these things and make these opportunities possible, and congratulations, students, you guys did an incredible job. Very, very impressive work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still transitioning a little, so, Dr. Fagan, Jonathan may need a wide-angle lens. Just wanted to throw that out there. It's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Maybe the next board renovation, next boardroom renovation, we could make him a little photography stand.
Okay, scaffolding or something.
Yes, we can get the Fine Arts Department to help us with that, a conductor stand, something, yes.
The next item is public comment. We do not have anyone signed up tonight for public comments, so we will move on to the next item, comments by individual board members. I will begin with Mrs. Parker.
I think we're going to have a relatively short meeting tonight, so I'll keep it brief. I just want to welcome everybody back from spring break, and it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful rest of the semester.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes.
Brief as well, had a good time honoring teachers today at the event hosted by the Lake Houston Partnership. So again, that was pretty awesome to, again, honor those teachers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't repeat those, but there is a lot of things. First off, the, our own Public Communications Department, winning 14 awards, very impressive, all you guys. And, 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 and Mr. Fryer also getting the Crystal Certificate Merit for Photo Portfolio. That's a big piece of work, so that's great. So congratulations, you guys, for all of that. You do us proud all the time, and it's very evident what we see here out in the district. And it's great that it gets acknowledged. And also, I would like to say, hey, there was a great turnout for the Mental Health Fair at Atosito High School, back towards the end of February before spring break. And thanks to all the staff across the organization, really, who helps to put that on. And some of us had fun at the Lakeshore Elementary Manor's lunch before spring break. That was, that was a good, good time. And I also want to thank Ms. Pullen and all the Support Services staff for, again, putting on the integrated athletics competitions. This was just before spring break at Turner Stadium for our high school and middle school special needs kiddos. They just have such a great time at those. I got to participate in Read Across America at Timbers Elementary. That was a lot of fun with the, with those second graders. And a shout out to the PTAs for their Founder's Day luncheon, that was, that was great, and all the work that the PTAs and the PTOs do across the district, that supports our campuses. We couldn't do it without them. And also got to go to Ecology Day at Kingwood Middle School, and it was basically Kingwood High School students in environmental sciences teaching the Kingwood Middle School students, I'm sorry, the Creekwood Middle School students that were taking advanced environmental science. And they had it outside, they had different stations that they'd walk to, and they'd explain, do their presentations. And what a great job, not only the knowledge, but the poise of those high school students teaching their younger brethren. It was great to see. And also, also had the opportunity to visit Mr. Taylor's Aero Science class at Kingwood Park High School, and they're working on completing their rockets for the upcoming competition in May. And I tell you, I got to speak to, spend time with boat teams and just ask them questions, and these kiddos are rocket scientists. I'll tell you what, they are really sharp and they really are learning a lot, and not just the science itself, but just the whole team aspect. And again, something not necessarily measured in a, in a one-day test, so they, they're, you could see the learning going on. I mean, they just do a great job, and so thanks for all those guys. And I also want to put in a shameless plug for this Saturday, the Lake Houston YMCA is having Bridge Fest. If you haven't signed up, it's not too late. You can sign up online, or you can come down to the Y and sign up. It's a lot of fun. The first race is started at 8 o'clock, and it's not a color run this year, but there's something for everybody, family runs and walks, and for the little guys and the older folks, regular running 3Ks and 5Ks. So come out, it's going to be a beautiful day, so hopefully you will join us. It obviously goes to a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison.
It is great to be back from spring break and lots of good news, and needless to say, you've heard a lot, so, and congratulations to the teachers today and these wonderful students, and that's enough said.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchhoff.
That was great. Where'd everybody go? I stepped down for a minute. All the important people are gone. Yeah, today was a great day. We won, Lake Houston Partnership hosted the Teacher of the Year Awards, and it was fantastic to see everybody. And congratulations to all the teachers, and also to the teachers that didn't win, and all the teachers, how much we appreciate them. That's what makes the district go, and, but today was, they did a great job. So congratulations to the teachers that won today.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, again, with everyone else's already mentioned, but thank you so much, the hard-working teachers and staff. We really do appreciate all that you do. The rodeo art winners, I mean, I love artwork, so it's just amazing to see it every single year, and also just the wonderful things that are happening in the district and giving, getting a glimpse inside of a day of a virtual student. Truly enjoyed all of that, so thank you very much. Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan.
Well, I'll be brief also. Teacher of the Year Luncheon today, one of several times we will celebrate our Teachers of the Year, and I think it's important to note that Teachers of the Year are selected by their peers, and so the teachers who see each other day in and day out, and all that they do for students, they decide who's going to represent them and their campus for an entire year, and so it's, it's quite an honor in our district, and it culminates at the Boots in Bling, where teachers are selected as the secondary and elementary Teachers of the Year, as well as one of them is the District Teacher of the Year. So it's a very exciting time, and love the way that the community comes together to support our teachers. They are amazing, and a lot of times, people forget how difficult it was during COVID and how they were thrown into virtual, and how then they came back out of virtual, and then they had reading academies, and we did a new literacy assessment, and all of these things, and the UMBLE ISD teachers are second to none. They step up to the plate to do what's best for students regardless of the difficult circumstances, and we couldn't be prouder of them or happier to have them. And simply said, we, we sort of jokingly, but not jokingly, said we want 100% of our students to grow in reading every single year in elementary school, and everybody gasped, you know, because that's not kind of the goals that people typically set. But our teachers last year delivered in the elementary school 98% of our students, and they can identify each individual student who did not grow, and why they did not grow, and what the plan is for that student. And I can't think of a better education system than one that knows every single one of its children, knows where they are, where they need to be, and what we need to do to help them get there. So extraordinarily proud of teachers who personalize education to that level. I know, when I was a teacher and when I went to school, that isn't how it was. It was very one-size-fits-all, everybody gets the same thing, and good luck. And in UMBLE ISD today, that's just not the case. We want every single child to succeed, not as defined by the state of Texas, not as defined by UMBLE ISD, but as defined by them and their families. And if they would like to be a welder, we want them to be a very happy, successful welder. And if they want to be a barber, we want that, too. If they want to go on to college, we're excited to get them there. So whatever that outcome is, we want to help every single student get there. And the reality is, those pathways are unique, and some are more challenging for other students because they really aim high, but our counselors, our advanced academic staff, our CTE staff, and so many others pour their hearts and souls into this work every single day. So I don't think that can be stressed enough. And a day when we celebrated our Teachers of the Year is just a good day to remind everyone how difficult it's been in education for the past few years, how hard everyone has worked, and how tremendously lucky we are to have the staff we have here in UMBLE ISD. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will now have updates from our Board Associations and Committees. First committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Parker.
We are working on some dates for April, and we will be doing an Austin trip.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison.
We've had some conflicts, so we've had to reschedule our meeting, and we'll let you know.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, I just would say, you know, being on that committee, we have just two minor items on the consent agenda, not, not too much to report there. And Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, nothing to report. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you. We are just in the beginning stages. We had a meeting just before spring break, and really in the really early stages of the 23-24 budget build-out. And we're also watching the bills that will be impacting funding. We'll see what will happen with some of those. But I do want to report something very positive. We got to see some projections of the changes that the Board approved that was recommended by Mr. Beding and his group on our investment policy, and it looks like that should probably add close to $10 million in additional interest income over the next year if things roll out the way we expect them to do, but they have the latitude now to make some investments where we'll increase return without really negligible increase to risk, and that's what you always want to kind of balance, return versus risk. And, and we talked about the health plan, and I think 2/3 of our staff, if I got the number right, is now enrolled in our health plan, and I'm happy to say, people took it to heart and are really making use of the Memorial Hermann Arrangement, and that's helping to offset costs. And that's, that's all I'm going to report for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kirchhoff.
We've got a committee meeting on Thursday, and that's, no report.
Okay, thank you. Kingwood Super Neighboring Council, Mr. Holmes.
Sure. Attorney Amanda Edwards, who's running for mayor, she spoke to the group, and they were also very interested in the UMBLE ISD election. So just provided dates of, for the vote, as well as just what's going on, you know, with that. That was it. Those are the two main things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Kirchhoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Item 4B, Student Expulsion. Mr. Kirchhoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the administration's student expulsion as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Moving to item 5, our Consent Agenda. 5A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, February 21, 2023. Consent. Item 5B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Thursday, February 23, 2023. Consent. Item 5C, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate, or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5D, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item 5E, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item 5F, Tax Refunds. Consent. Item 5G, Board Authorization of Inter-local Agreements. Consent. Item 5H, Approval of RFP Number 2021-006R Educational, Educational Service Consultants. Consent. Item 5I, Approval of RFP Number 2022-101, Miscellaneous Instructional Material Vendors. Consent. Item 5J, Approval of RFQ 2023-15, Technology Consultant Services. Consent. Item 5K, Approval of RFP Number 2023-22, E-Rate Category 2, Equipment 2023. Consent. Item 5L, Approval of RFP Number 2023-102, Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation, District-Wide. Consent. Item 5M, Policy Revisions, TASB Update 120, and Administrative Recommendations, Final Action. Consent. Item 5N, Deductive Chains Order. Consent. Item 5O, Change Order Number 1, SCHS Canopy. Consent. Mr. Kirchhoff, can I get a motion on the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through 5O.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. There are no action items on tonight's agenda. Next is our information items. Item 7A, Intruder Detection Audit Report. Mr. Perkins.
We've had no intruder detection audits since our last board meeting.
Thank you very much. Item 7B, UMBLE ISD Police Department's 2022 Racial Profiling Report. Any questions or discussion from the Board regarding this item? Okay, we'll move on. Our last item, Item 7C, Financial Services Reports, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the Board regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? The time is now 6:43 PM. This meeting is now adjourned. I'm so sorry. Who, the clock says 6:43. It's not me, it's the clock. I, my apologies, let me repeat that. The time is now 7:44 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.